Okay, we're going to call the work session Tuesday, May 14th to order. The next item on the just on the agenda are citizen comments for items that are not on the agenda. Does anyone want to speak to this body? Seeing no one, we'll move on to item number three, consideration of event permit application from the Heritage Foundation for the Heritage Ball to be held at the Eastern Flank Battlefield Park on September the 21st, 2013.
This item is a little bit unique, just want to note, in that the plan is for it to be at the Eastern Flank. If there is, for some reason, interference with the construction of the access road still going on, Plan B is to go to Harlinsdale. We expect we're going to be okay with Plan A, but we've sort of provided for that as an option, and will need to make that call probably about a month out from the event.
Item number four, consideration liquor license retailer certificate for Wine and Liquor Depot Wine and Liquor Depot LLC, owned by Harold McCormick, managing agent and Sarah McCormick. Any discussion there? Move on to number five, consideration TDOT Special Litter Reduction Grant Contract 2013-0031 in the amount of $55,000 to further promote the city's Blue Bag program and to remove litter and large debris from the Harpeth River.
Becky and Andrew.
Go ahead and take it away.
All right. Good afternoon. Last fall, the city submitted a $55,000 grant application to TDOT. Early this year, we were awarded that $55,000. I can go to the next slide. So basically, the overview is, there's two components to the grant project. There's kind of a continuation of the Blue Bag recycling campaign that we already have, and then there's also the Harpeth River cleanup. There is a 20% match, so that amounts to about $11,000. And that's a combination of end time, staff time, and services, and an outlay of funds from the solid waste budget. I can go to the next slide. So in terms of the recycling portion of the grant, we're looking at billboard rental, decals for every sanitation truck the city has, additional starter kits, newspaper ads, and then also the hiring of a PR consultant to kind of help assess the strategies, the marketing that we've done, and also kind of help develop some new recommendations and outreach. And right now, the participation rate's about a little under 50%, and with this grant and kind of the resources here, we think we can get that up, hopefully to 60. In terms of the river cleanup, we're proposing to partner with the Harpeth River Watershed. They have expertise and a lot of experience with river cleanups. It's kind of a two-pronged approach. We're looking at a small-scale river cleanup where one or two folks in a canoe can kind of sweep the river and pick up some of the smaller items, toss it in the canoe, and be able to haul it out. And then we're looking at an effort to remove some of the larger items that one or two people would not be able to maneuver out of the river. And preliminarily, Harpeth River would conduct like an assessment and do an inventory of some of these larger items and determine which ones we could actually remove. And the timeline would be probably this August when the river levels are at their lowest because the river's most accessible. The breakdown of the grant of that $55,000 is split roughly equally between the recycling part and the river cleanup part.
Alderman Berger, then Alderman Skinner.
Why do we think it's necessary to hire a public relations consultant? Because I think we could do that in-house very well, Melissa's department. I think she does such an excellent job, so tell me why we need to take that on.
It was actually one of the recommendations that came from our communications department. Squeak at you, I apologize. Is Melissa here?
I think this is something Melissa's recommended to sort of augment our efforts.
You've got a mic? There's one, pull it over.
So, question is, why do we need to do that?
I want to know why you're not doing it in-house. Because you do such a great job, and I don't know, I think the marketing, but the public relations part of it, and identifying other ways to get the word out.
Well, we have done a lot of it in-house, but I am just one person, and I have a lot of projects. I'm like the advertising agency for every department that we have in city government, and so I'm sometimes stretched a little thin. So getting that outside help would also help us to get a new perspective and help me, and I think we would be working closely together.
Might get some new models.
That might be the first thing they say.
That's right.
And they look at that thing and they go, who's that? That man else.
And when we were researching the grant, we did reach out to three different local public affairs people to kind of get their ideas, and so it was nice to get a little bit, it was a lot of things that we had already thought of, but also some new ideas, and that it would just be extra manpower that we kind of need.
When you look at it, we've steadily grown the participation, but we've kind of plateaued in the last six months or so around that, up and down around 50%, which is great, but we want to get to 60 and above. So I think bringing in a little more of a push here to help augment what we're already doing, which is very successful, might help us get that next level.
Somebody asked me the other day, this was an interesting question, they said, well, if it's a volunteer program, and you want to get, and it's helping to reduce our land costs, and we know how much solid waste has gone down, the subsidizing of solid waste because of this program, I mean, it's huge. And if that's the case, somebody asked me the other day, they said, why aren't we charging people that don't use the program because they're adding to the cost? And why aren't we subsidizing it with everyone's tax dollars rather than charging the people that don't use Blue Bag a little bit more per month? That was a, and because what you want to do here, you're telling me with the PR, everything is trying to get the ratios up.
And that might be something that would come out of a study or a consultant.
I think that's something that other cities have pay-per-throw programs. I know Becky's told me a little bit about that, I'm not sure. That's something she's considering.
We've looked at pay-as-you-throw programs, and that is an option. We're looking at different, we're actually looking at different services from a perspective of what the service costs, what each type of service that we provide costs. We've been able to keep it as a package of services up to this point. It's really difficult right now only because one household may participate two weeks out of the month, every household may participate four weeks out of the month. That would be something that we would really have to look close at as far as bookkeeping and being able to manage, you know, do we or don't we charge, and at what point do we charge, and when do we charge?
Yeah, just unlike cities in Europe, they weigh the trash.
Exactly.
They weigh the trash, and you get charged by weight. So if you're in recycling, it's free, all day long, every day.
Exactly.
Alderman Skinner, then Alderman Branford.
Was this still about?
It was just about, how much is it, how much were we talking about for the PR?
We budgeted about $10,000 for that.
Woo, that's a lot, to me.
That'd be the maximum. That'd be the maximum.
We've really spent very little money in what we've done so far, and we've done a lot with that little money. Some of the projects that we were thinking about doing is decals for the sides of our trucks to help, you know, use our own trucks for advertising and getting the word out there. And to print that, it costs a little bit of money, and some of the other ideas, which I don't have in front of me.
Well, I was talking about just for the...
Just the consulting.
The consultant. I didn't mean the whole PR thing.
Oh, right. Well, I think, I think that that would include some of their services, that what they would do for us, like going out to the schools, or it would include placing ads in newspapers and those kind of things.
Oh, okay. So, okay.
It would include the work that they're performing for us and the costs of something.
Speak after me.
Mike, we're going to finally get you.
I just had a question. You know, for years, we've had stories about wrecked cars and things down in the river right here near downtown, so what is their scheme to do?
I would love to speak to that. Thank you for the opportunity. We will not be disturbing what is actually located in the riverbank at the old city dump. We agree with that, Mr. Parker agrees with that, our city engineer, Paul.
We've had some TDEC direction along the way to not remove certain things.
The goal of this is to, is to clean up the river and make a positive impression, make a positive, you know, result at the end of the cleanup. I think that if we disturb the old Second Avenue dump, that will be absolutely opposite of what the goal is. So, from a state perspective, from our perspective, we won't be disturbing any of that. The primary large items will be things that have washed up with the 2010 flood. Some of it's appliances and things that you can't very easily pull out of the river just with one person or in a canoe. So those will be the type of things we'd be looking at.
Branford. My comment is, because this is a TDOT grant, and we just, you know, received one for the access road and all the additional costing money. Are you prepared or anticipating other TDOT requirements because of this grant that we, that have not been identified because that cost will have to come from your department?
Yeah, this is through the Highway Office of Beautification. It seems pretty straightforward, the guidance we've received from our contact at TDOT. I'm not anticipating any additional costs. I feel like the $55,000 is what we've got, and it'll only go as far as $55,000.
It's a little different than our construction project that has certain hoops. We've met ours with the match, and they're allowing a good portion of it to be in kind from our own efforts. We don't expect the kind of surprises you can get in our road project with soils, as we were just talking about before the meeting, but, you know, this is a, basically, an event and a public relations outreach program that we've pretty well defined and feel like we've got a good handle on what those costs will be, and this, you know, they've reviewed this plan, and will deliver on the dollars provided.
Andrew, just put a bug in your ear. Can you find us a grant that can take away that old dump? Because when you canoe down that river and you look over and see the toilet sticking out of the side of the hills, and the thunder, it's not so hot, you know?
One of the recommendations that I've made is that we plant, that we plant some native ivy or other native plants that can actually grow over those items, so that, I just think it would be detrimental if we tried to, if we tried to dig up there.
Well, that's a major, that would be a major, I'm joking, that would have to be a major grant.
That would require a state...
I don't know if there even exists for that.
State approval.
Yeah. Ivy, like that.
Yes.
Everybody happy? Item six, acknowledgement, acknowledge report of emergency purchase from Southern Sales Company, Inc. of Nashville in the amount of $25,663.44 for replacement of a high-service pump number two.
What are you going to do?
A whoopee push.
Welcome, Mark.
Thank you. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Next item.
We've already made the purchase. The requirements, we're reporting it to you now, it was needed for the water treatment facility, is in place and functioning now.
Yeah, they're, they're good to go, so.
Item seven, consideration ordinance 2012-38 zoning text amendment to amend Chapter Three, Section 3.2, and Chapter Eight, Section 8.3 of the zoning ordinance relative to hotels.
Good evening. We're revisiting hotels again. We've been doing this for about a year. We began last summer, and we looked at combining all Suites Hotels along with the full-service hotels and adding a provision for boutique hotels. At the time, we brought it to Plan Commission and then brought it on to BOMA. BOMA sent it back to Plan Commission for some clarifications, and we are now re-presenting it. It did come out of Plan Commission with a 7-0 vote, and the provisions of this new ordinance will allow for boutique hotels in certain areas, and will allow for all Suites and full-service hotels to be combined, but the hotel operator has to pick two of three amenities for those hotels. It hasn't changed substantially, but it has changed and it has been clarified. And Alderman Peterson and I talked today, and I believe she would like to make a further clarification.
On the boutique hotel, I guess that's on the, what, back of the, I guess it'd be page four, it says, "A high-quality hotel which contains less than 120 rooms located within the City of Franklin Historic District or the CFCO." Well, I mean, I've seen this at least three times, but it didn't occur to me CFCO means all of Central Franklin, which would be from Mack Hatcher, you know, over all the way over to wherever, and down to Downs Boulevard. So I think we have looked and, and said that it's probably, the idea was that it would be kind of in the historic district downtown. So it, it looks like that would be CFCO1 and CFCO2, that, I can pass this around if people want to see it. It's, it's kind of the, where we, you know, right, right here on Main Street, and then on, I guess it would be mainly the 16 blocks, would you say?
Mainly the 16 blocks.
15 blocks, I should say, yeah. But, but instead of being out, as I say, toward Mack Hatcher.
So what color?
It's the purple and the pink.
Purple and pink.
Yeah.
Any other comment?
So Alderman Peterson, help me now, you're, you're making a statement that this should not extend to the Mack Hatcher, to the...
Listen, it goes Mack Hatcher all the way from, I think it's Hillsborough Road, down to Lewisburg Pike where Mack Hatcher connects there. And so I, I was understanding the boutique hotel to be kind of in the downtown area.
Well, I wouldn't have no problem with it being out there either, but I mean...
Well, I mean, I thought the thought of it was, you know, kind of the little place where you'd be here, it'd be walkable, you know? I mean, that was just my idea of what the boutique hotel meant, although some of the others, you know, are certainly very nice, this would just be the little specialty hotel.
We don't even have sidewalks that go all the way to Downs Boulevard, so.
See, and all the way to Downs Boulevard? You know, I mean, that...
And many of those zoning districts would not allow for a hotel anyway, but, you know, this, this clarifies it.
So is it over, overreach? Is that what you think?
Yeah, I thought, I thought, in fact, whenever I first read CFCO, I thought that meant the, the real downtown, but it turns out it means all of that Central Franklin character area.
Did you get a sense from the planning commission that they...
I don't think anybody noticed it. I didn't notice it, you know?
It doesn't allow it. I don't have to worry about it.
Yeah. I think we can move with what we have, and if our ordinance...
Well, I mean, where are you, as I say, where else were people thinking about boutique hotel? I thought we were thinking about here and maybe over...
You can call a boutique hotel out on Downs Boulevard, you can call it a boutique.
Well, but it's, it's taken care of in those, those other things, the full service and the, I'm sorry, what were they called? The combination.
Full service and suite.
It's full service.
Full service and suite.
It's covered in the...
Well, we do talk about full-service hotels, which are now combined with the all Suites Hotels, and we do talk about full-service restaurants, lobbies, entrances from the interior, not the exterior of the buildings, business centers, all of those kinds of things that make for a good quality hotel, but a boutique hotel becomes something special in terms of complementing what the historic district has to offer and the walkability of tourists being able to walk to different locations.
So if, I'm sorry.
Anne, why don't you make the, when you get ready, why don't you make the motion to amend? I never thought about a boutique hotel being out on Downs Boulevard. So...
And it said in the historic district, see?
Yeah.
Was, was the other part, I mean, that was in the historic district, and I thought that the his...
What happens when you start throwing around words like boutique and historic?
We've been kicking this can down the road for a year, I'm ready for it.
If we amend this, does it have to go back to planning?
No, I was just asking. It does not have to go back to your planning commission, you can clarify.
Because why, you go ahead and say, because I didn't know this, but...
Yeah, because it's not expanding, it's reducing.
You're narrowing it, within the area specified.
I don't know what you have to worry about.
It's kind of a subset of the...
Well, see, that, that was...
Not likely.
But there might be for another type of hotel, which, you know, is expansive and everything. And also, it has to be, it can only be like 120 rooms or something.
Or less.
Yeah, you know, or less.
I got a question for you.
Jane, go ahead, Alderman Berger.
Full-service restaurant, which offers meals, blah, blah, blah. Okay. Does this full-service restaurant have to be owned and run by the hotel? What about Drury Hotel? They have a, a restaurant attached to their hotel, but they don't run it. It's Grant City Brewery and is privately owned.
Yeah, I would not distinguish between the two. I think most hotels, many hotels don't own their, their restaurant entity. It just has to be placed in the hotel.
Well, they, they were up and running before they had that.
Yeah, and...
They probably had the other, they had the other two, so you probably didn't have to worry about that.
Right, and it is a, you know, two out of three, so you can...
But that wouldn't preclude someone from having a hotel. They didn't have, they had two of those, and that was one of them, but it was run by somebody else.
No, I would not see that as precluding it.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. All right.
Everybody good? Item number eight, consideration ordinance 2013-15 of ordinance to rezone 80.88 acres to the height overlay district for the property located southeast quadrant of East McEwen Drive and South Carruthers Parkway.
This is a request by the applicant to include in the Pickering property a height overlay, and we've talked to the applicant over a large amount of time, I know Plan Commission considered this as well, as to where that line would be. And I believe that we've come up with where that line should be so that it does not impact the neighbors in the single-family or around turning lane, turning wheel, but does give them what they need in order to allow for some height. Now, we would see, and we have asked them to work with us in terms of transition down to the single-family areas, but, you know, we believe that this line is the extension of the HTO from the north.
Alderman Berger.
You're absolutely correct. I mean, it's, even if you went that towards that building that we have that stores our equipment in.
The parks.
Even if, by the parks, if you even had, how many stories are we talking here?
We don't know. We know you can go up to 12, but they are indicating that they don't anticipate that.
But even if you had that, that's still fairly far away from any residential. Because in order to get to residential, you have to go up the hill, past the park, and then it's up the hill, on the hill, and then down a bit on the hill.
Right.
And I don't even know if you could possibly see it, of course, but you're not going to even be, it's not going to be intrusive into, which would, which would concern me if it was next to, like you have Kirin Bridge, which is next to those buildings, which are way too close, and you could be in an office building and seeing people's backyards and everything. And I don't think you have that in this area at all.
And that's why I think between the applicant and, and the city, we kind of worked out that this is where the line really belongs, that works for the development and works for the city.
Yeah, and if you had townhomes in the back with that development with Highwoods, I think that I see where they should tweak that, would have to be, have to be placed correctly, too.
Alderman Peterson and Alderman Skinner.
You know, if you look at this, the, the park is over there across from most of this, and really, whenever you get, not in the planned overlay, but say between the overlay, the height overlay and the turning wheel lane, there's a huge kind of mountain or something like that. Just go straight up. So really, it's going to be blocked by the topography there.
A lot of it's going to be blocked.
Yeah, really, it is.
And I don't see them doing it 12, and even if they did it 12, you're not going to see that.
The difference in the, because I ran the topo, I mean, I looked at a, over the topo, the top of that hill there is like 920 feet, and most of this is in the 700s. So I mean, even if you're talking about a 12-story building, it's not going to be seen just because of the hill there. Really. So I thought, I thought in that case, it was, it seemed good.
What, what did our planners use when we calculated what the traffic needs would be there? How many stories did they calculate in these areas?
They calculated, I believe, and Paul, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we calculated at maximum.
And what is that?
That is 12 stories.
12 stories. 12 stories, okay. And there's, yeah, they did a pretty significant load in there of over a million square feet of office space in the retail and residential. It's pretty heavily projected out in terms of heavy, pretty heavy, heavy development.
Good, good. That's my other question.
Number nine, consideration ordinance 2013-16, ordinance to rezone 57.23 acres from agricultural district to residential variety, RX district, for the properties located south of South Carruthers Road, north of the Harpeth River, and along the proposed South Carruthers Parkway.
This is a rezoning, as the mayor indicated, from agricultural district to residential variety. It is, and the next item you have is the development plan for that. It's in support of that development plan, that will be 168 attached and detached units on 57 acres.
Any comments on nine or 10?
I have a comment on each one of them. On, on number nine, it has the rezoning plans submitted. If you look over here on the next page, they've got the wrong schools listed here. You know, this is down on South Carruthers, and they have Franklin High School, Grassland Middle, Hunter's Bend, and that's been called to the attention, but it just, it just needs to be corrected. That's the only thing. It just, especially, whenever we come, we're voting on this tonight.
This is on your...
But before the public hearing, as I say, it's, it's really just some wrong, it's got, you know, it's gotten past it wrong. But anyway, that needs to be changed before we, we have it at least on the public hearing.
And we will get with the applicant and have him...
And that's also, that's also on the other one. But, but on the other, on the number 10, there is a modification of standards?
Yes.
Yes, and they, they request, this is on, I guess, item 10, on the, on the next page, that, on the third page of this, yeah, page three, says applicant requesting a modification of standards to prevent, to permit garage doors exceeding nine feet in width on side-loaded and rear-loaded garages. Now, it says here, the planning commission recently approved the same request for another project at its earlier meeting. However, please be aware that at that other project, it was several years old, and they already had houses built that had the wider doors on it. And so that is the reason, I think, that the planning commission gave approval for the other one. This is not quite the same thing. It was actually a split vote of four to three on whether to approve this, but there's another piece to this, too. Right now, in the works, this standard is being reviewed for possible changes, and, you know, this has to go through, what, three readings, the first of which is tonight, and it's possible by the time that, that we get to the final reading on this, that other is going to be in the works. This would be long before they would have, you know, build, actually build any of the houses and everything. So I just, you know, I was one of the three that, that voted no on this, just because I don't want to start this until we have made a decision, and that is planning commission and Board of Mayor and Alderman, about, about the garage doors. Let me tell you, I am not a person that has felt really strongly about the, all those hundreds, if not thousands, of design standards we have. So it's not like I'm thinking we can't change a design standard at all. It's just that I think that this kind of just needs to go through the... just needs to go through the, go through, go through this, and if the standard is determined, or maybe there's specific parts of how to investigate how this standard is changed. But right now, it's, you know, it's a single door for each one.
Alderman Berger.
So if we wait, how long are we talking of waiting? I mean, does this hold people up while we sit around and they twiddle their thumbs while we, you know, and all do, Anne's got a good point there, but I mean, while we're doing it, it's going to take some time.
Right.
So do we delay these people by doing, by doing that, Catherine?
They can come back in site plan and ask for the same design standard modification at the site plan level. I will say that we are currently still working with the design professionals on these garage door changes that we're looking at. We looked at this particular situation and we really feel like a nine-foot garage door and an alley-loaded garage product makes it difficult for people to move in and out of that garage. And we're not talking about front-entry garages or even side-entry garages facing a street. We're talking about an alley-loaded front.
Yeah, you've got to get in, and if you've got that, it does make it hard to get in.
But, but think, think about the point is, and I'm sorry, I didn't mention this, they have all the way until they get site plan approval, which would be past the two more, the two more readings that we have, you know, if, if it's, if we have, I would say, if the other part hasn't been determined since then. And I think that that was what people felt, too.
But this was a three, three, three against.
Four to three.
It was four to three, yeah, yeah.
Do we need to hear from somebody, applicants, because if, I just need to know what.
Good afternoon. Chris Pascarella, Pearl Street Partners. We're the applicant on this project. Alderman Peterson's correct. There is a process underway right now with respect to staff looking at this matter. I think the challenge is that the timing of it's very difficult for us in that, yes, you know, potentially you could address this at site plan, but at that point, you have fully engineered drawings. And if for any reason, staff and, and planning commission and BOMA elect not to change the standards and continue to require the individual car doors, the smaller doors off side entry or alley, we would potentially have to re-engineer the site with, and change all the lot depths because, again, especially with alley-loaded, you have, as you all know, you have a minimum of a four-foot apron off of the, or five foot from the pavement, or twenty feet. I don't know if it's possible to negotiate the four-foot, four-to-five-foot apron with a single-car door, and that's really the benefit of the two-car garage door on especially alleys or even side-load, trying to navigate that ninety-degree turn on some of the smaller lots. So I believe this is a, I don't, I don't know of really any communities that have the one single-car door on alleys, and I'm not sure if I've seen any on side-load garages that are, you know, in that sixty to seventy, seventy-five foot wide lot width. Certainly, when you get into the hundred-foot, hundred, you know, plus-foot lot widths, you may see individual garage doors on side-loads. So we felt it was prudent to ask for this modification of standards. We understood that there was some process underway, but we realized there's also a risk that that won't, it won't survive the process and the standard will remain as is. So we respectfully ask for the modification of standards. It's consistent with the development pattern that's in the field today, West Haven, Barclay Place, Stream Valley, Willow Springs. It's very consistent with what's out there today, and I think from a quality and aesthetic standpoint, there's no degradation to approving this modification of standard.
Now, could I say, you just said, if it's not approved, though, in the long run, that gives you the opportunity to not follow the standard, right?
That's what we're asking for, a modification of standards.
I know, but what I'm trying to say is...
My point is, if you, if we wait until we go all the way to the site plan, you're talking about a very expensive set of engineering documents that basically you have to start over with.
Well, could I, could I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the diff, how many of those are you planting with the short pad on there?
Well, it depends. Typically, all your alley-load, especially, you'll, you'll design it for the four-foot apron to give the house, again, we're not, we're not building the home, so we're not going to be putting a house designed, but all the envelopes for, especially for an alley-loaded, will allow a home to be built all the way to the minimum setback on the alley, which is five feet off of the asphalt, four feet from the property line because there's a twelve-inch grass strip of right-of-way.
That's interesting. Well, so in other words, it hasn't, it's not going to be decided until the person comes in to build the house, right?
The, the building envelope will be designed to accommodate for it all the way to the end. I mean, I don't know, unless a builder is actually the developer, I don't think you will have a situation where every single house is designed for every single lot. So as the developer, what we're trying to do is accommodate a building envelope that's conducive to an alley-load or a side-entry product that can be navigated without having to do a four- or five-point turn to get into your garage.
And so that's, that is the reason that the standard is being discussed to be changed, right?
That's right, and I'm not sure if it was ever really intended that, you know, be that way, but be that as it may, it is written that way, and so I don't think you could actually go out in the field today and find a single-car garage door, especially on an alley. But, so I think this is, I think this is really, to some degree, cleanup language, but nonetheless, we do, you know, again, our intent is to be completely consistent with the existing standards that are in the field today. We're working closely with staff on this. I believe they're in support of the modification of standards. We think it's an appropriate request at this time.
Alderman Barnhill, do you want to make a comment?
Yes, I can wait. Go ahead.
May I use my garage in Willow Springs as an example and clarify for me? I have an alley-loaded garage, the wide door, and I can get my truck in there. What happens if I had two garage doors?
Be harder to get your truck in there.
It would be, and yes, it would.
You have to pull up, pull up.
So, so the standard that we're going to is to do away with the wide, the wide doors?
No, 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 no.
That's what's in place today.
That's what's...
That's what's in place now.
What is in place now is single doors. We are going to looking at the wider doors for side-loaded and alley-loaded products, not front-entry.
Wow, okay.
But the side-loaded and alley-loaded.
I don't have a problem in the being the front-entry, but, but from the side or the rear, we're still looking at the wide doors.
We're looking at changing our zoning ordinance to go from the single doors to the wide doors.
Which is what you have.
Which is what I have. So I'm in non-compliance. I may have to, I may have to lack that from here.
I think it's a, it's prohibited, it's not prohibited, it's permitted, non-performing, so you're okay.
And let me say, I am not, you know, I did not necessarily agree with all the design standards that were imposed. Please, I mean, I, I'm not, as I say, I was not a supporter of all the design standards, so, you know, I'm just saying, it's what it is now and we could change it. I mean, I think, I think we're going to, from, from what Alderman said.
Mr. Gird.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Alderman. This is, this is a good discussion, and Chris and many other design professionals and developers, as you know, we meet monthly with staff to discuss our design requirements, our processes, and it's with their help that we are able to bring things before you. We're very fortunate to see an increase in development activity, and I want to express caution that having this type of discussion here without following the process and getting the proper feedback from the planning commission through a public hearing and bringing it to you would only maybe perpetuate other areas of our ordinance that we'd want to talk about amending, and that's what we do in collaboration with the design professionals. Now, I know that for Chris and this development, it may cause a little bit of a delay, but we do want to support and respect the zoning ordinance, and for those developments that can come and comply with that, should be able to move through the process fluidly. And we are always open to listening and discussing amendments, but we want to be more encouraging of following the ordinance with developments, and hopefully, they achieve the quality development that we have expected in Franklin. So I know that's probably not what Chris and other people that have a project on the cusp that this affects, but we are addressing it, and it's going to take a little bit to make sure it's properly vetted. I just want to make sure that we do it through the proper process. Thank you.
And I think the only thing I would say in response to that, Vernon, would be that, you know, I mean, I guess that's an argument for doing away with modifications of standards then, because if, you know, there are other things that are out there that, you know, you know that we're in the process of working on, things like parks, dedications and so forth, and I think my only concern about this is that perpetuate then a process where everything just gets put on the shelf until the, you know, this is evaluated on a global basis and taken through the public process. I mean, we did have a public forum at planning commission where this modification of standard was raised. We had a public hearing. The neighborhood was, was aware of it. We've had a neighborhood meeting, so there has been an opportunity for the public to opine on this, on this topic. There was, there was no opposition from the neighborhood at either the public neighborhood meeting or at the planning commission meeting, and I would welcome the debate or discussion at the second reading where this will be a public hearing at BOMA. So I respectfully disagree with, with your point, just because I think that from time to time, there are, there are projects or situations that come up where modifications of standards are appropriate, recognizing and fully respecting and understand that this is a process that's underway concurrently, albeit ahead by a couple of months, at least, the, the process that staff is currently undertaking with respect to changing on a global basis, so. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, Chris. Item number eleven, consideration agreement between the city of Franklin and Bridges of Williamson County for administration of emergency shelter programs for the homeless. Any questions about that? Number twelve, consideration agreement with Westlaw City of Franklin, contract number twenty thirteen dash zero zero five eight. Any comments about that? Number thirteen. Thank you for all your comments, Shawna. Consideration bid award to ESC Lab of Mount Julia, Tennessee in a total estimated amount based upon specific estimated quantities of forty-five thousand fifty-nine dollars. We appreciate you not sitting down. Per year for industrial pretreatment sampling, it'll take a few more minutes, excuse me, and testing and water reclamation facility influent, effluent testing contract services for a minimum of twelve months effective July first, two thousand and thirteen. The rest of it you can read for yourself.
Same thing, same crap job.
I would like to know that that is not my caption. These are standard contracts that the wastewater treatment plan or water reclamation facility is entered into for our pretreatment program and also our influent and effluent testing.
Questions? Alderman Skinner.
We mentioned that you'd not recommend the lowest bidder because that's the current bidder, performer, and there have been performance problems.
There have been three performance issues, two of which we find are pretty significant, one of which is chains of custody have been, we've had issues with the chains of custody, and also the analyses have not been performed within the prescribed timeline in which, so both of these are concerns for both us and TDEC, and we've, we wish to kind of step away from that, so.
And these are well documented?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll see you at seven o'clock.